Start off the supervisor's board meeting here this morning. With approval of the agenda and the minutes.
I so approve the agenda and minutes.
You want to do accounts payable or you want to?
And also approve the accounts payable.
As received.
And no liquor license.
Okay.
Motion will be seconded by Crouch. With accounts payable, as received. Agenda, minutes, as received. Any further discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Carries. This time, is there any supervisor updates?
I have none as this week. I will have MAPPA, Board Finance, and West Central. So, there will be more to report for next week.
Same here, this last week was kind of a neutral week for me, so next week I'll have all sorts of things to talk about.
That's right, we'll have lots to say. Okay.
Did you sign that one? Or did you give it to her?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, up next is Larry Hurst with Emergency Management and Julie Lyons with Public Health on updates for the COVID-19.
All right, I just have a couple of quick updates for you this morning. In Mills County, you'll notice that yesterday we had a press release with one additional positive case confirmed in Mills County. That brings our total to 21 confirmed cases. We've had 1,372 individuals tested with a 1.5% positivity rate. Of our 21 positive confirmed cases, 20 of those cases has have recovered. And so, just for clarity, sometimes on these report, these news releases that we send out, it looks like people are recovering in record time. Sometimes on on paper, it looks like they're recovering almost as fast as we get them. And that's that's not correct. So, the recovery time is still the same as always. What we sometimes have is a lag of official test results coming back. So, sometimes you can see that we might report a case and then it looks like four to six days later, they've recovered. It actually goes back to the the date of the test and they still have all that recovery time and that surveillance and the amount of time that it takes to recover. But I think it is confusing sometimes to see those cases on paper appear to be recovering so quick. They're recovering on standard time.
But all in all, I think we're doing well.
We are doing well. So, at this point, we have the one the one active case that we're doing public health surveillance with, and so that's that's going well. Our public health nurses are working really closely with our long-term care facilities. So, we have test kits on hand. We have enough to do all residents, all staff. Starting the first of next week, public health nurses will be doing testing with Mishna Valley Group Homes, testing all staff and residents. We also are working really close to to what the governor and Iowa Department of Public Health is asking our long-term care facilities to establish that baseline of testing. And we are ready to do that when they are. According to the document from the Iowa Department of Public Health and the Iowa Department of Inspections and Appeals, there's some protocol for nursing homes to gradually phase into more liberal visitation. And part of that is, we really would like to see that baseline start. So, we also, as a public health agency, are looking into serology testing. I am fascinated by that. And we are going to go through the process to see if we can offer that in the community.
Would you call it?
Serology testing. So, that's when we test to see, have you in fact ever been, have you had COVID-19 without knowing it maybe? And have you built those antibodies in your blood? That also would establish for our community some sort of baseline. Do do we have, you know, more people that have been exposed and recovered and built those antibodies? Do we have some people who are not symptomatic? That would help us better understand the disease and how it's-
And of course, as a blood test?
Yes, and how how the tracing goes. So, we're looking into that, we're interested. As far as just activity in the community, we are working really closely. Probably the the one thing that we're really looking at right now is our local fair. So, we're working with the fair board. I have a meeting with them this Thursday at 7:00 PM to just discuss public health measures and how we can mitigate and and just the best practice for that. We I did receive notice too from the Montgomery County Fair. They they sent out a press release about COVID-19 and how it will affect their fair. And it's it's going to have some pretty big effect on fairs, but but there are ways to work around it. We are also working closely with the schools. Lori's on a district leadership call today. They're trying to plan for all of their contingencies for this fall, how they'll open up schools or or conduct their learning and and what measures they'll have in place. We also have frequently asked questions and answers regarding swimming pools and COVID-19. You'll remember at the last governor's address on this issue, pools are open right now strictly for lab swimming and lessons. Lifeguards can also train. But swimming pools are not open to the general public for regular swimming at this time. I want to think it's June 17th that this particular order will expire and the governor will give additional direction. So, that's information on swimming pools. People are wanting it to be summer.
Yeah.
Also, the Iowa Department of Public, I'm sorry, the Iowa Department of Human Services has a COVID recovery line where counseling can take place via virtual sessions, chat, or by phone call. And they offer this to find online support and learn new strategies to cope with the pandemic in some creative ways. So, that's a service that's available through the Iowa Department of Human Services. It's available to every Iowan. It's free confidential counseling. And they have links to it on Facebook and Instagram and Twitter. Or they have a line, 844-775-9276. So, that's a good support that's available in our community.
You know, Julie, I have to put, we don't think that is a big deal. But my daughter's little neighbor boy has not been out of the house for two and a half months. And he's literally scared to death. That, so counseling is a big factor. You know, you think, oh, they're not gonna, but there's just some-
Sometimes it's out of the mouths of babes too. When you hear little people, my my little guy says a prayer at night and at night, and he always, always says, and please help nobody get the COVID-19. And it's like he's he's a little obsessed because it comes up every night and you know-
Exactly.
Well, it's changed his world, the way he's been living.
It has really significantly isolated him. And I think that with a broad scope, we're seeing a lot of that. And so, we're having to work around those issues and-
So, it is a big deal.
It is.
You know?
It is, thank you.
Some families just are so concerned and that goes on down to their children. And then they take it like, they're just scared to even go outside.
I know.
So, counseling is going to be an important factor.
Yes.
As far as testing, like Glen Haven Village and things like that, are we getting that done or are we having trouble or?
Um, you know, they they are kind of on standby with us. We've ordered the tests. We are ready to assist them where all systems go. And they are still under advisement about if and when they want to proceed with that. We are strongly encouraging them that it is a really good practice and it's establishing a baseline for how their employees and their residents are. It is also tied to this leveling phase of reopening, so-
What is the deciding factor, Julie? I mean, why why are they not just saying, come here, let's test them?
Uh, I don't know for sure exactly what's holding them back. We talk to our long-term care facilities at least once or twice a week. We send them all of our HAN, our Health Alert Network. There's a lot of really specific great guidance for long-term care facilities. When I read through the documents, I feel like the Department of Inspections and Appeals and 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 all the regulatory people are definitely saying to our long-term care facilities, get everybody tested, establish this baseline, it's critical.
Right.
And they walk all the way up to the line of saying, you have to do this. And then they and then they they contract a little bit. For instance, on this document from inspections and appeals, they talk about restrictions for long-term care. They talk about establishing the baseline. They talk about how it will open up. And they say, you know, everybody should establish this baseline. And then they say, and then at bare minimum, if you don't establish this baseline, then you are mandated to do it if you would have a positive case. And so, they walk all the way up to the line saying, you absolutely have to do this. And then they say, and then the bare minimum is somewhat less than that. So, I don't think that long-term care facilities are absolutely mandated to do it at this point. But they will probably down the road, and I think it's an important step in in reopening.
Do you think this is the person that's in charge here or her board?
I-
I shouldn't say her board, the board of directors?
It's really hard for me to speak to that because it's not my agency or my board. I know that our long-term care facilities have been exceptional. I mean, I think that-
They have.
What they have been willing to do to keep their staff and their residents safe and put good measures into practice, I absolutely salute them. Some are more dragging their feet on getting this baseline testing done, but they're not they're not saying no. They're saying not right now. So, I hope that we can move in the direction of of getting it done. And then, at the end of the day, it's it's their agency and it's their decision. And our job is to provide them with good information and encourage them and and then-
My feeling my feeling is, you know, we've we've provided and provided, we're right here at the threshold of it. And they're still, I don't know, wary of what might come out, whatever. But, you know, we we have we have done everything we can, that's the main thing. That's that's what I care about. You know, we we brought them everything they would need. And it's more or less out of our hands if I read you properly, right?
I would say so.
Okay.
I also would say, and and I am I am an optimist, but I I really do think it's just a matter of time. And we I think we're going to get there shortly, I hope. I would also say we are sitting on enough test kits to to do everybody. And I Larry, I know that's a little bit of a bone of contention with you because it's not good to sit on test kits. I mean, we we do have a, we're sitting on them, I don't know.
Got to use them.
280 some just for those long terms with all lives, so.
So, we're we're ready when they are.
Good. Good. So, any supplies that you ever order, you and Larry, is it good coming in or is it a long waiting?
You know, we're the the for the health response, for central workers and health response, I'm still able to get those from the state. Some categories, they're reducing the categories of type of supplies, PPE, personal tech equipment you can get. And I think the state's trying to wean us off of them by the end of this month, I get a feeling. But there's also a couple of surveys out there that we're supposed to do for anticipated supplies, which is due tomorrow, I think, which I need to complete today. And get up to them, what our anticipated needs are, again, certain focus categories. Now, out in the business, the world, you know, the commercial world, the prices are still high in a lot of things. And getting access to them are still kind of selective. But we're working through different different vendors and keeping having to monitor certain things to see when they become available and see where we are in stocking. And we may want to go ahead and acquire some when we can get them. So, so it has been a little painful for everyone concerned, I think, trying to get this. But we've been able to support most of our our nonprofits or clinics or long-term cares, our fire EMS, law enforcement, and public health, their needs thus far. So, we've been pretty lucky. And of course, our numbers have been low, at least low that's been tested and come back positive. So, I think because of that, our our need for additional PPE or high usage rates is not what it could be. And that's that's the concern I have is is with baseline testing and things, you need to know where you are. I think I agree with Julie, these long-term facilities have been very successful with the mitigation measures they've taken. They work very hard at it. I think all the families have been very supportive and understanding. And I think a lot of these facilities have done what what they could mostly to provide either a virtual access to their family members or through the window, you know, looky see type stuff. So, I think that they should be, you know, basically, it's a positive thing, I think. But I think I would want to know, okay, how well am I doing? And and what's the baseline? If the state's recommending that we move forward through these phases, that was the requirements for us to move forward. And we need to at least be thinking about how we're going to attain those goals to moving forward to more a a new normacy. Now, what the new normacy is, is yet to be determined, but at least allowing some level of comfort and confidence in allowing families to have some relationships with their family members, again, to some degree, with with certain concerns and mitigation measures put in place.
Well, you're seeing on the shelf, you're starting to see toilet paper, so things back.
That's-
Things are kind of sort of moving back.
They are.
Can't believe people have used everything they bought. It hasn't, does it have a shelf life, Larry?
I guess you got to keep it dry, dry in a dark place, I guess, I don't know.
So, this makes me feel good that if you had to quickly order something, you wouldn't have to be waiting six weeks for-
The state's been really responsive on, again, the certain focus categories or immediate need. Normally, when you put an order in, they want, they've gone from a seven-day need, you know, usage to a 14-day. So, I got to keep heads heads up on a little more. But we've been pretty good. A lot of our entities that use this PPE has been very good about not catching this just-in-time needs. They've been basically giving us a heads up. There is, we've had, I've got some emergency management resources also that we've been drawing down, which, you know, because of some shelf life issues, it's good that you manage and do that anyway. And so, the big thing is cost recovery on some of our expenses. And and there is some opportunities to some of that through grants and the feds, federal government, stuff like that.
Okay, good. Well, kudos to our governor, truly. She has kept us online and-
It's not been an easy job.
Not been easy, it's so true. Well, good, okay. Well, like you said, keep washing hands and-
Yes, ma'am.
Social distance and like you haven't heard that enough.
Thank you, Julie and Larry, you know, we appreciate the updates and things as they come through and-
Absolutely, thank you.
You know, if anything that we need to do or help you with-
Yes.
We're here, so.
Appreciate your support.
We're in this together. Thank you, Larry.
Thanks.
Thank you, Julie. All righty.
Good morning.
Morning, Corey.
Next on our agenda is Corey Gaston, Mills County engineer. You're not going to go up, you're not going to go up north and apply, are you?
Up north where?
Where at? Is it Hancock County?
Oh.
Richard.
I know the auditor there, he's used to here.
No.
Don't see, you didn't even know.
Nope, I do not plan.
It gets really cold.
I don't want to miss any opportunity.
No, he's staying here.
Nope, I have no plans to leave in the next few years anyways.
Forty.
Forty?
Forty, let's have a long time goal.
Forty, hey, whatever. I won't say that probably, but-
I won't either.
Good, yeah.
Hope I'm not working for you.
Hey, any utility report?
No utility permits to report. And I do want to continue with the ordinance amendment.
Yeah, and Tyler and I discussed that too. And he said, because you're still in the, we have another amendment to make to it. And we kind of talked about maybe scrapping and starting all over again and getting that, but that policy part isn't quite ready yet. And it's another section.
And Tyler told me that it could be a resolution. And I think that's the direction we should go to make it a resolution for the admin plan. And and then we we know that some point they're going to have to do another flood study because the flood maps are based on data gathered before the 2019 flood. So, at some point, it will be updated and we'll have to do another amendment to the flood plan ordinance. So, if we do a resolution in the meantime.
Well, what about the, you know, if they do the new study and stuff for the for the levee itself, you know, will will that change?
That would, I would assume affects the flood plans.
I'm guessing that FEMA may is, you know, they're because of their process, some things will be kind of long. Of course, that means that maybe FEMA won't. But my guess would be is that if they if if the, we'll say the M and P is proving is pursuing accreditation, okay? And engineering is going forward, which it is, that there's possibly FEMA will redefine their timeline, you know, to this new study, based on if there's levees along the river going to be accredited or they're in the process of reengineering, you know, to get engineering data to do that. With that being said, they'll probably go the other way and start earlier, then they'll have to do it again. But but yeah, this this engineering data is probably very data is probably very important to what they do with the baseline and and everything else. It's a long process. It took a while to get that done. And then it just was kind of unusual when it showed up and which ensured that which caused us or Corey to start as floodplain manager, develop this updated ordinance. And then we really don't know where we're at, so.
Sure. Okay.
But we can stick skip down to general discussion until nine o'clock. We got a couple, 15 minutes.
May I give you general discussion?
Since Larry's here, we did complete the Seal Coat project. Since we've had it complete and we've we've received, now the process is turning in our request for reimbursement, which goes through Larry. If you're aware, Larry, according to Terry Brown, I go through you to request reimbursement from the Flood Recovery Fund for our Seal Coat project. And so, I am waiting on invoices from the contractor. And we have our own time hours that we need to put into timesheets. And then I'll have all that information for you. But if you know what what kind of documentation they require or-
Yeah, I think it's got to be, we'll have to check on that.
And just let me know, but-
I know invoicing for sure and exactly what he's talking about with the timesheets and et cetera. But I don't know, is there's there is there a specific form that he needs to use or?
I need, we need to call him.
Okay, we need to, we have to worry about that.
Yep, I'll have, once I have that invoice material required or received, I'll also have our equipment, labor, materials, hours ready to go for you.
On M16, I've had three people complain about the oil leaking through, of course, when it's 95 to 100 degrees. Are we, can we put down more chips or are we going?
We put down more chips yesterday on M16. We are out on both L68 and M16, brooming. A lot of those chips get pushed off to the side just by traffic, we'll broom them back up. And if we need to haul more chips, we will.
Well, one guy says, he says, I was trying to split the track, you know, even, and he says, it's just oily. He said, well, it's just too hot, and it is. I mean, it just, it's good, it makes a nice solid base eventually, but-
Yeah, you'd-
He says, my truck looks like I repainted part of it, so not good.
You think?
They're signs.
You think that we came out?
You're so loyal.
Where does those chips come from?
We get those through Martin Marietta. So, we have to travel Springfield to pick them up. They're hard to find, to be honest, and they don't always want to give them up. So, we try to keep a stockpile at all times because we don't know if we can ever go get them from them. Other counties use other materials.
Like what?
North, they'll use pea gravel, but but up north, they have all that nice river rock for gravel. We have crushed limestone, which just isn't very durable. They, some other counties use just sand, not a not a fan of that. You really don't have much structural strength, sand, so. I really like using chip, the, they're three eighths inch diameter chips. They give a little bit of structural strength and and they just hold up a little bit longer. I think a couple of years ago, the red slurry mix on Brothers, H, H, that's not 20.
It's H12, but that's not-
How does he say, is it 12?
Yeah, it is H12. That, I think, was a quartzite, a crushed quartzite, fine, that was like a three eighths inch. If we could get that, that'd be great, but-
Why? Because it's-
It's quartzite's just a more durable, stronger rock aggregate and-
Let me tell you what they're crushing down at Malvern right now. It just looks terrible.
As far as the product?
Yeah, looks like, eh, looks like you could mix it for cement.
Really?
Oh, Richard.
And I don't know whether it's it's the area they're in, in the in the pit area where they're dragging it out, but man, it just, it's not going to be a good base, but maybe it'll work fine for a cement base, I don't know, but boy.
Well, it does have to get certified through the DOT, so before we can put it on.
And that's always a a good, good plan, though.
Uh, so, with Seal Coat, we have received some some compliments. I I know sometimes I come up here and I complain about public complaints, but I should also recognize that we do receive some compliments.
You're good, Corey.
And I do always pass those along to the crew. They like hearing them. We usually post them up on the wall in the shop, so it is nice, even though then across the office, I get hear complaints. Because, like you said, they drive through fresh oil and now she has to wash the undercarriage in her car.
But it does, there are signs that say fresh oil.
There are signs, yep. Yep, and-
Just write them.
I love that, great Seal Coat job the engineer did on Ives, so that was a good job.
Nope, nope, not, not Ives. Speaking of Silbergs, we are expecting to do the farm-to-market rock project that's been delayed 14 months now. Was delayed because of flooding and then didn't get on it last fall because no material. And since then, they just haven't had the material to to do the project. They agreed to hold the prices from last year's contract and as I would expect them to. And we're looking in July to to do 30 miles of FM rock. Will also be trying to hit a lot of, I I know we do have a lot of gravel roads in Porkwood addition, not a lot of rock. But as it becomes available, we will try to get as much done as possible. And and like I said, we've we've been able to get a lot of maintenance done May and June, which should give us availability in August, September to 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 get more rock done.
But all the oiling is done?
Yes, that what we're going to do this year. We may do some tear up in the fall. But we're, I don't want to commit to anything yet with with our budget, with, haven't received full funding from not receiving the expected revenue in our road use tax fund and and maybe-
But your auditor paid you. You're fully paid there.
And so, we're just, I'm just keeping a little close eye on it. And if we do some tear up, looking at H12, which is a heavily traveled area, but it's going to be one of those spots where-
Especially over in the eastern part.
We just, when we get the cupping and the wheel tracks that are two, three inches deep, it it, there's just not a lot you can do other than grind it up and and let it sit for over the winter and then come back in the spring, which is the process we did on L68 and M16, so. Other general discussion, I will be bringing amended five-year plan next week probably. Richard, you'll probably hear more about this tomorrow at our RPA meeting. There were some issues with the tip, the original- There were some issues with the tip, the original tip, as far as, um, the region as a whole was not physically constrained. And since we've decided to go towards, um, a different style of project.
Yeah.
Letting or not letting, but project assignment where each county kinda just gets their allotment and they put, program their own work. That affected Mills County, um, significantly more than the other counties because Mills County was way behind in projects a couple of years ago. With always the understanding, while you let some counties get behind, use some money to get large projects done because the four hundred thousand dollar allotment we get annually really doesn't let you do much per year. You have to let it build up, so. You know, if, in the past, it kinda went, one county would do a big project and then they'd sit out for a couple of years.
Somebody would pool their money like to Harrison County or Shelby and let them do a big project like. We just got done with one, our four hundred thousand would go to them and.
Got it.
And, uh.
So now what are they saying?
So now it's gonna be more of a, you bank your money and use it as you see fit, um, but, but you always have a balance. You can't go above your balance by more than like a year or two and.
Are we behind?
We are overprogrammed now because we were behind.
Okay.
So then it's like, okay, time for Mills County to get caught up.
Right.
Well, we pro, Kevin programmed a lot of projects, which it was fair compared, I mean, that's how things were handled, but now it's, okay, well, let's all go to this new. You get your allotment, you program your allotment and, and that means since we're overprogrammed now, we're gonna make a couple of changes. Um, the biggest change, uh, will be moving the silk, the Silver City Highway, the north section back a year, which instead of doing it in twenty twenty-one, we'll still do the south portion this year. But we'll have to wait till twenty twenty-two to do the north portion. It's, it's only a year and, and it'll still get done, but that, that's a big one and, that's also, we're also gonna just push back each project a, a year as well and, uh.
And it could get pushed back further because folks, uh, the, the money is not rolling in and you cannot use this.
That is correct.
One point two, this ten billion dollars that we got. A lot of it we can't use for what we need to pay for now. That's, that's disgusting part of it, so.
Yeah.
It would be.
Our allotment's probably not gonna be correct or estimated allotment with, uh, road use tax on being down and. But we can go over that more next week. I just wanna give you a heads up about it.
Are you driving up tomorrow or are you gonna?
Yep. Or no, no, I'm not. It's still, it's still, uh.
Still phone, still virtual.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, so MAPPA exactly isn't on my good side lately with, with, uh, the Bungie project, um, the, the EDA grant application.
Yeah, what's the deal with that one?
Uh, Don Gross told me that all the money's been allocated. We're still gonna turn in the application, but he doesn't expect an award. Um, hope that maybe somebody who, who did, uh, get awarded maybe doesn't complete the project and will next on the docket.
What happens?
I thought that was a set in stone type of thing.
He sold it that way.
That EDA money is very competitive.
I bought that.
Yeah, with disasters occurring, uh, there's a big competitive edge for that and that means you've got to do your worm work and get it submitted as soon as possible. I know we tried to get, uh, a big chunk EDA money for the accreditation study for the M and P after eleven floods. And we had a package, went up and sat through a couple of board meetings to get it expedited. MAP had the executive council there. They have a subcommittee that works on this stuff. And got it submitted and then the Saint Joe tornado happened. And the Saint Joe tornado happened, uh, then it just, you know, cause that was a significant event, uh, it took the biggest chunk of that. And so we lost out on that money for the accreditation.
Population.
Yeah, so, so that's how it happens, but you gotta get it in first and that's the thing. And timing has to gain in as soon as possible. Once you know that number one, it's available, number two, there's a need.
No, and, and, and we took, we took their advice and said, okay, well, let's go get the rise grant money first. And then we turned in the EDA application and so we get the rise money and came to turn in the EDA application. And MAPPA was like, yeah, well, we'll, we'll do the application for you. We gave them all our information, gave them the thirty-page application and, and information that we filled out for the rise grant, you know? That's, what, what help do you need filling this out and, and it's just, didn't, didn't pan out and so.
So now is that whole project gonna be put on hold?
It's on hold until we can figure out funding. Um, I'm trying to set up a meeting with, uh, MAPPA and John Rasmussen, Pot County engineer, trying to figure out alternative funding sources and what we can do maybe to, uh, to find a way to fund this program, project or, uh, or, uh, maybe even, break up the project, remove some items if we need to, um, or it's just kinda back to the drawing board, but we do have some money, um, through the rise grant, which Kevin was able to get extensions, um, for the Hundred Ninety Street project with the rise grant for six years, so. So I'm hopeful that I can also.
It's not that hard. They ask you to come and just ask why or tell you. I had to go up and ask as the board chair like six years ago with Kevin and we, you just set this for the DOT and explain why you're, why we can't use the money right away, you know, and we did. They said, okay, and I mean, they just held it, so. But nowadays, how things, they look at things could be totally different too. I mean, if somebody's got a project ready to go and they need money.
We'll see if I'll keep working on it and John's a good resource in Pot County. And hopefully MAP, maybe MAPPA has some other funding ideas, so. Obviously, if we tiff, we'd have to get approval from Council Plows, I imagine. That'd bring us back around to annexation talks. I, 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 I don't see that being an option. Not really an option to use RPA money or FM money, um, especially on the new roadway, uh, west of I twenty-nine because that is not a farm-to-market route. Um, actually, Bungie Avenue's not a farm-to-market route west of I twenty-nine, so.
I can't believe that.
Yeah, that really surprised me.
Ninety, ninety percent of the trucks go to the bean plant.
East of I twenty-nine, but it's not west of I twenty-nine.
Just because that, that thing going up to the ethanol is such a short leg, they won't qualify the rest of the way cause that.
Really, really the, the leg going to Bungie is, is not any longer. Not when you come off of twenty-nine.
You don't see a lot of traffic coming across Belby Bridge for, for the grain haulers. I don't see that much.
Just Nebraska.
Yeah, I don't see a lot coming across there because of the bridge.
Okay, well, that's not good news.
Yeah. Uh, otherwise I didn't really have much other general discussion, but it looks like we're at nine o'clock.
Yep. Oh, let's see. Nope, I don't think, nope.
No, no public hearing, just a second reading and, um, if I've not heard anything from anyone and I'm assuming neither have you.
Nothing in my office.
You guys have the option of approving each the second and the third reading. Or you can approve the second, waive the third and then go to the approval process of, um, ordinance, so. Whatever you choose to do is acceptable. Should we just opt the third reading? If this through and approved?
So you're motioning to?
To waive the.
Wait the second reading through the third?
Waive the second reading and third reading, reading.
Yeah, accept the second and waive the third.
Yeah, accept the second and waive the third. Do I make a motion for that, Carol? First of all, do I make, make a motion for, um, starting the second reading? Do we need to do that?
I would suggest that your motion would be to accept the second reading and waive the third reading and move forward with approval of the ordinance.
Alrighty, I make a motion to accept the second reading, waive the third and move forward with approval of the ordinance twenty dash O two A.
Next motion.
Here, we have a motion on the floor with a second from Crouch. Accept the second reading, move forward to, uh.
Prove and adopt.
Prove and adopt ordinance twenty dash two A. This is roll call, right?
Well, you need to make a motion to approve.
You gotta make a motion to. I made the motion and you seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
Now we'll do ma, but now we'll do roll call. Mayberry is absent. Crouch?
Yes.
Sentenced?
Yes.
So, let's see where's my. Apparently someone ate it. You don't have my ordinance, do you? It was here. The what? It was lame, right?
I have one, but I don't have a signature.
Yeah, but I have a signature page and everything, cause I brought it in here. Did someone steal it?
Did you lay it with this stuff?
Well, did it get picked up with us?
I didn't.
It was right here. Honest to God, I brought it in here.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll find it, sign it.
We must've did the L rod from two hundred and thirty to over to two hundred and twenty-first.
Yes.
Very nice Speedway. Very nice Speedway.
Is there a back page on it, Carol? I got, you put a date on it? Yeah, how'd you get it? How'd you end up with that? And it was under. This is it?
Yeah, that's mine. Thank you.
Carol and Carol stack?
Yeah, well, I thought I brought it in. Maybe I set it down when I did something else. Okay. So I guess we can fix this.
On top.
Okay, do you wanna?
At least three.
All of them or one of them?
I just changed the name to protect.
When we get the small, the regular procedure, I'll bring some else down too. They're on order. I had to order them separately.
Thank you. Just one?
Yep, I have just one. I can copy this off right. Um, do we have to refile this whole thing again and pub, republish the whole thing or just that section?
Just the se, just that section.
Yeah.
Section twenty-six seven B.
Okay, yeah, we're truly gonna have to write the whole thing. He gets.
Yeah, right, that's what Tyler agreed to. Then we just need to put the section to twenty-six seven B.
Twenty-six seven, okay. So I think I stopped this electronically, so I just need to cut and paste and. Just that paragraph right there? This, this that?
Well, we have to get, uh, number one and for sure.
Okay, with A, B, and C. Okay, all new substantially improved structure shell. Or two says the same kinda thing.
Don't need, don't need.
You don't need to, are you sure?
I believe. I can double check.
Okay, yeah, let me know how far we have to go.
Great, we'll get it published. I'll get a copy of it published and send that on to Iowa DNR. And we'll be done for a little while. Yeah, I was pretty pissed last week.
It was tiny. They got a lot of projects probably going on, just like.
Lot of stuff going on.
The, the EDA money is very hard to get and you gotta really go fast.
When Williams leaves, will that be a truck driver's job or is that a?
Operator.
Operator.
Well, my guess, so we put out bid sheets, we'll collect those today or at the end of today. Put out bid sheets to the crews for anybody who would like to. Um, conduct interviews.
And then that will.
Department and then we'll, whoever takes this spot will have to replace their.
So it's like a Domino's type thing? And then Bob Gaylord?
Yep.
Is that an operator?
He's not.
Is a, uh, he is our tractor trailer, our tractor truck driver, which, um, probably will not be bid on through, or we'll, we have to put out bids to the crew, but more than likely, nobody will bid on that. Just because the guys don't like driving that and, and so my guess would, would be we'll have to probably hire that one out, but we'll see if anybody wants to bid on it. But he doesn't retire until August. Ron retires in early July.
Is it early July?
Yeah, I can't remember.
What are you doing here? You fell out of state home. It's too hot to work.
Uh, the guys have been going out early.
Yeah.
Starting, starting at six thirty instead of, or starting at six instead of seven.
How many blowups do we have on? I heard there was four on Henderson Road.
We had a couple of.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Expected, it was warm. Well, it's usually that first, when it's, uh, three, four, five days over ninety degrees, um, right out of spring, that's usually when we'll see them.
So then we cut that out and, I mean, how do you?
Patch it, yep. Yep, we'll just have to remove it and patch it, so.
All by Henderson area?
Uh, that's all I've heard. Nope, and that's the great thing about having, uh, a maintenance crew as capable as ours. They can handle that.
Good, good.
Yeah, they was all in for early coffee and stuff yesterday. All of them sweating.
The early coffee.
What early coffee? Whatever. Casey? McDonald's, let, it may be either.
Alrighty.
He did, another question. I have Prusa guy come in. We met him last fall down here at the coffee shop. Anyway, he's back and they're talking about re, removing dirt. Have you heard anything?
Where or who?
He's, he'll give me more information in the morning, but I'm just giving you a heads up that they could be starting to haul.
Where at or who?
Well, it sounds like it'll be coming out of the slough area. Have you heard anything?
Mm-mm.
I think down there south of, uh, Watkins, Watkins area where they were taking it out off of, uh, T- twenty-first Street. I think they're...
No, no, this is, this is out of the Haney Slough.
Yeah, I understand, but I think they were gonna do somewhere down there.
So, which word is the wise? Keep my eyes open.
There'll be a lot of heavy traffic on kind of that.
How's the Ames construction by conveyor build? How's that doing?
Uh...
Any...
Never received comments from zoning, um, but me and Tyler have been working on agreements still and I think we'll have a draft to put forward to Ames for their review and hopefully get that signed. See, we'll see what kind of questions, concerns they have. They've been pretty...
Ames has given, given Darren very much information yet on the conveyor system, you know? From what way he talked the other day, so...
And I don't, I don't know what he, he's received for his permits either, um...
I thought they had all their permits paid, signed, sealed.
For me, they've, they have, um, as far as, and they have their conditional use permit for their borrow area. But the building permits they need for the actual conveyor belt structure, I don't know where the, they are on that.
That's not on, that's not on next week's agenda. From what I, what I could read on, on our big meeting for... So they would be coming, they wouldn't be coming in till July. On that one part.
I might reach out to Ames and make sure they know, they know that.
Yeah. Well, they can't get on now anyway, so I'm quite certain they know about it, so...
Otherwise, get an agreement in front of them and sign it. I know that they did pay for, uh, their surcharge fee, um, for the amount that they planned to haul on trucks here in the next month or two.
Hughes is gonna haul the biggest share of that.
Oh, really?
Really, uh...
I'm sure they're using probably multiple trucking companies.
Because I think Mark sent seven trucks up there now.
Until they get the belt going?
Yep.
Well, yeah.
They planned to haul through August, or at least that's what, um, I approved for their haul route.
Amount of dirt is moving around this...
Everywhere you go, they're going in all directions.
City is just unbelievable.
Oh.
Well, they're supposed to haul into Malvern next week for the new, uh, clinic.
Oh, I see it's, they got it all staked out.
Got it all staked out and stuff. That dirt, that dirt I think is coming off of Williams over there, right north of thirty-four. My indication.
Did they have to raise that up pretty high?
Well, from the look, I, I can't figure out why they're going... Somebody said they're gonna put four foot of fill in it, and I'm going, again, you can drive uphill to get in the clinic? It looked like it'd be pretty, unless it's an impact, you know, an impact, I just think that's ridiculous, but anyway.
Right.
It'd be four foot just for, uh, uh, settlement.
Yep.
And that's what it's taken too. Maybe that's what they've got a... Wow.
You know, they put six, almost seven foot of fill where the Lakin building sits.
How much?
Seven foot. Then they took it out.
And then they took it out? Wow.
Settlement.
Yeah, you either overexcavate and bring a new fill or you just overload it and let it settle with the dry fill.
Who's gonna build it?
Gonna... I saw their sign there anyway.
Okay.
Now that I try by there a lot.
That's right.
On a regular basis.
That's right.
Alright, I'm outta here.
Thanks Cory.
See you guys later.
Thanks.
Okay. Well, if I don't come in here, I might come down to your office and just sit in and listen. If you don't care.
When is it?
Tomorrow at eleven.
Yeah, maybe. Maybe you can sit here. We actually have our, uh, tomorrow, we have our, um... No, tomorrow's Wednesday. Thursday morning at nine AM, we're doing our post-election audit. Uh, we notified the two political parties. The Secretary of State requires us to do one after the federal elections. And they randomly choose which precinct, um, to do. So, we have a, a little group of, of individuals that will go over and look at everything. And they will hand count the ballot for the, um, it's the only one they're counting is the, um, big race, the congressional race. And to make sure that our numbers match the numbers that were received by the machine total, so...
Axny, Axny Young, you mean?
No, 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 no. The one that's got like five people running, five or six on the Democratic side. Um, it was the, um, it's kind of, I think it's the...
I've got it here, Carol.
It would be where there's five or six.
Senate race, US senate race. Teresa Greenfield and against Johnny, against Johnny, that's one. Kimberly Graham, Michael Franklin, Eddie Moro.
I think Greenfield won that, didn't she?
Well, she did here, but did, I think she did overall as well, but I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm pretty sure, but not one hundred percent.
Now, Carol, you got from Jamie or not, report what the legislators did to the board supervisors?
Uh-huh.
Well, I know what the...
Take care of the ambulance service and stuff in the county.
Oh, I don't know, did you see that?
Oh, I didn't see that one.
Well, yeah.
Richard said they turned it over to the supervisors to levy for the, uh, um, ambulance or fire and ambulance?
Nope, ambulance only. Emergency service.
Emergency services. I haven't seen that one yet either. I know what he, I know what they did to us in the election portion and I'm very upset about it. And I have contacted both my senator and my representative, um, by, and, um, our affiliate is, is as well. Um, sending out a letter to them and, uh, we had a very, we had a bill, uh, which all we were asking was them to amend the part where our seal on there. We asked that it said, that the county, our election seal say Mills County, or ours would say Mills County auditor. We can no longer have our names on the ballots, but at least it's sealed because the original seal was the treasurer. Now, the treasurer has nothing to do with elections or anything else. So we asked for our own. That's all it was. And there are thirty pages and of amendments. And what they've done is, they're proposing is to go in and take away the ability for the Secretary of State to send out the absentee request forms like they did this year, which increased all of our, um, voting in the state of Iowa immensely. Um, to take it away so that we no longer can go look in iVoters if someone forgets to put something on. They wanna take our time back to apply. And as you guys well know, you saw the amount that came in and how we struggled to get them all out. And now we'll have to personally contact people by phone, which some of us give them, give a, give us their numbers, some of them do not. Or by letter to say, hey, what political party did you want? Hey, what this, I mean, we already had to do that, but they want it in a twenty-four hour turnaround period. Well, we're already swamped with people. They don't wanna allow us the opportunity to, to... They don't wanna allow us the opportunity to consolidate precincts. Um, it's, it's ugly. It really is. And it's, it's, it's not a good bill. And what they have done to add to the amendments is not a good thing. They don't like the absentee voting. Well, okay, I understand that. We're not sending ballots to people who don't request them. Oh, and we won't have the ability to, um, the, the people in the assisted livings and things like that couldn't do like they did this year. That would, you know, disenfranchise them from voting because we can't go in there because of the COVID thing and I, you know? What, what happened in with the, um, the help we received from Secretary of State and mailing all those out? I mean, it made this election, uh, statewide much better than any other. I mean, a lot of people don't vote the primary just because, number one, they don't wanna pick a political party. Or, you know, two, they just kinda let it go. But, you know, if you're given an, an opportunity to fill out a request form and send it in, you know?
And it was the biggest we've ever had.
Right. Oh, statewide. Yes.
When something is great and wonderful, we gotta...
Well, they're, they're, they're looking at it like we're sending out ballots to people that didn't request them. That, there are some states that do that, this, that balloting process. We've kept the, we kept open precincts. We did limit them because of our age factor. Oh, that was the other thing, our high school kids, which we didn't end up having too many of them this year work. Um, they wanna limit that back to our high school students. I, I don't know what, I don't, I don't get it. And I did send, and hopefully I hear back from both of them.
Okay.
Um, so if you guys, um, the senate's supposed to, the senate committee's supposed to vote on it again on, I think it's Friday. So, you guys have an opportunity to contact. It'll throw it back in the house, probably.
They're pushing it hard.
Yeah, and I, I don't know why.
Yeah, I had a date yesterday on it, so they're...
I don't know why.
No, it says, this, this bill as amended would authorize the county board of supervisors to declare emergency medical services and essential county service and impose a property tax levy to generate the funds necessary for the services. The bill also removes the five-year limitation on the EMS property tax levy and puts in place reverse referendum provisions. The bill loosens restrictions on twenty-eight E agreements for EMS coverage and the permissible use of revenue.
Since, uh, well, by law right now, they're not a central service, Iowa code, number one. Number two, uh, because they're not a central service, uh, the township trustees are mandated to levy. But we know a lot of in our county, the townships over the years have started to levy some dollars to help EMS services. But it's not across the board and it's not of an amount probably to help them. The biggest concern I would have is, is that if this does pass, then we gotta, the townships would be released of levying any tax dollars free EMS, because if they did continue to do that and the board levy tax dollars, then it'd be double taxation possibility. Depends on where the money was taken out of. So, uh, so that would be something we have to be clearly communicated with the township leadership that, uh, the board is taking over that levy authority. And then it'd probably have to be a subcommittee set up and determine what that number is.
So, as, as most of the trustees and stuff, all levy certain amount of money to EMS. Is that going away then?
It would have to, I think. It's not mandated that they levy EMS, only fire. Right now, because they're not a central service. And but we know that there's been a lot of townships trying to help EMS. They, they consider them, we consider them a central service. It's just that I had a part public health never came up or admin or whatever with the legislature and to, to create them a central service. I have no idea, there is, there has to be reasons why it's never happened. Uh, but it, it's, it's caused our emergency services to be put in limbo. And that's why you see not only across state Iowa, but nationwide, a problem with, uh, EMS, uh, services being there, especially in the volunteer world in rural areas.
The recommendations that they, if, if you wanna be an EMS person on, on a squad or something, the time you get done with training, you might as well be a full-time EMS somewhere. Because when you gotta put, you know, forty to forty to eighty hours in a emergency room, that's the same thing as if you wanna be an EMS. I mean, so...
It's, it's, and then the pay is not the greatest
No.
For a lot of our EMS personnel.
A lot of them don't get paid at all.
The, uh, well, the volunteer fire departments, EMT, some of the departments are able to give them a per-call stipend based on grants that they receive. But, uh, uh, just the pay per hour for a, uh, a duty EMT or paramedic, uh, is not the best job as far as if you're wanting to make an income. That's your only source of income because it, uh, people, I think a lot of people go into EMS because they wanna serve. And if you're in a volunteer fire department and you are an E, you acquire an EMT or paramedic license, that means you've invested your time and money, uh, to, uh, serve in that capacity. So, uh, I think it, something needs to be done. We know that, we've talked about it, other counties have talked about it. If this is the plan, then I think if the boards, advisors, through legislative action, becomes the, uh, the levy authority for that, then, uh, again, I think there would have to be direction to the townships to not levy any more money. Again, because then you'd get into that double, possible double taxation, which I think as a taxpayer, I wouldn't care for. But on the other hand, I think to assist the board, we, we need to have a subcommittee assigned, uh, to determine what those numbers would be and those needs would be across the board for our services, which I think is, it would, it would, it would allow equality, I think. And, and, uh, and give them a fair, fair amount to sustain operations and services within the county. And then you can kind of set standards, I think, you know?
Richard, how long has Linda been?
Twenty-some years. Almost thirty.
A lot of them do without any pay. And all.
No, she's never, she's never received any pay for it. You know, a lot of them haven't, they've just put their time in and retired and, you know? It's like she says, it's tough to walk away when you hear the call go off and nobody responds. Or one person responds to drive and that's it.
I've had, I've had discussions with counties, um, actually a, a county with, uh, near Des Moines that is fast, well, fast growing counties in state. And they've had problems with EMS where they, during the daylight hours, they've had to bring units from far north in the county just to cover a call south in the county because of personnel availability and people's jobs and things of that nature and the cost of a paid service. So, it's just not us. It's, 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 it is, it is everywhere and something needs to be done to help these people.
What am I gonna do?
Well, you got, you got eight services in Glenwood or in Mills County.
Well, there's actually...
What, what kind of a, what kind of a bill do you tack on to cover this?
What a nightmare.
We actually have five counting Emerson VLS first responders and Hastings first responders. So we have about five. We have ten units in the county right now. Your main units, of course, of City Junction, Glenwood, uh, Service City, Malvern are some of your, your main EMS services. And then Hastings first responders and Emerson has first responders. They have an ambulance, but they can't transport.
Well, and...
And we depend heavily on Red Oak, uh, EMS in eastern part of the county. And they, the townships over there have been reluctant on fire or EMS to levy any tax dollars for Red Oak. And Red Oak's been coming over here without even a twenty D agreement.
Well, the way this reads, you, you don't even need one.
And, and one...
You just ask.
Yeah. And, and, you know, one day, you know, maybe if Red Oak quits coming, then what do we do in eastern part of the county for fire EMS?
So if something happens, who's at fault?
So Red Oak would answer some of our calls?
Well, they have been.
Well, they have been.
For years. They, if we have fire calls or EMS calls eastern part of the county, uh, we will go point to point a lot of times to Montgomery County and request assistance because again, during the day...
What's that?
It was this, it was in Malvern during the day, you know, they, and, uh...
So then they just go to Red Oak?
And then, and then, well, they, yeah, if they come and pick them up, they're gonna go back to Montgomery County. Unless it's trauma, if it's trauma, then it's gonna go across the... To either stress medical center or great murder person, just trauma.
And then we'll talk about the other, we're gonna put the other two items and then go to...
Jump past the buyouts for now. Tyler will be back in a few minutes.
About that part in just a few minutes. We only have two items. We're gonna go, move to the BPTC board approval. That, um, it's the business property tax credit applications. Uh, these are all new ones, um, for this year that apparently had not been in before or apparently renewal. I don't know, I had to run downstairs to ask. Um, but, uh, so we just need to have, um...
And what businesses is this or?
Uh, these are the businesses that are probably, that apply for... These are the businesses that apply for the business property tax credit, you know, through the state, which apparently they're hopefully still funding and haven't not yet. So, I don't know how many more years we'll have of that, or what we're looking at, but currently, we're adding them to the list. So, need approval to authorize the sign-off for the business property tax credit applications.
And this is a yearly thing?
Well, we get new, I mean, they're, the other ones stay in unless something changes, and then I believe then they do new approvals, unless they approve, they might approve the same ones every year. I'm just trying to look to see what the dates are.
I don't think so.
No, this is, no, these are all new. They may have applied in like July of eighteen, but it's for the assessment year applicable, which is 2019, which is a wrap. So, these are all new. So, this would be, I think we have one, two, three, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and I think it looks like twelve, twelve new ones. Alrighty. I make a motion to approve the business property tax credit applications.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Motion made and seconded to approve the property tax credit applications. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
Unless you'll opt on this. The next...
On the agenda is authorize the auditor to cancel outstanding warrants.
Any warrant that hasn't been cashed in a year is subject to be canceled.
He's gonna cut me off.
Yeah.
You can't.
He found it.
Oh, you did find the check?
Yes, he did. So, he's not gonna get his canceled, but, yeah. See, we don't spare anybody here.
Darn.
Can't hold those checks forever.
Sun visors hold more paper than, yeah, if I wanted to go look something up, I go look at my sun visors.
You don't like it when we do ACH and put it in your account, but then when we give you a check, you're not responsible.
Gee, I don't get a check very seldom, I'm going, man, do I want to cash this? I may not need it today, you know?
It was his wellness check from last year.
Oh, Richard! You worked so hard!
Ninety bucks.
Hey, thank the state, they're the ones that took off the, took out all the taxes.
Oh, there's another thing coming down, too. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. Discuss it. I'm, oh...
Doesn't have to do with this, no, yeah.
I make a motion to authorize the auditor to cancel the outstanding warrants, checks, whatever.
Second. There's a motion made and seconded to have auditor cancel outstanding warrants. Any further discussion?
You don't have a lot of those, do you?
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Oh, anybody that, from now, from, I don't know if it's gonna conclude this year, but anybody that gets paid as a clerk or a trustee, you will turn that in and you will pay tax on it.
Pay what?
Tax.
Well, they're making us, as the township clerks and trustees, their twenty-dollar checks, we have to run it through payroll now. They've been telling us that for years because of the IFRS portion. You know, they can opt out of the IFRS, but when they receive their twenty-dollar check, we now have to take taxes out of that because they're...
I haven't had anybody ever collect.
We've kind of blocked the system for a long time and just done it out of accounts payable because it's not, well, Jolene had a meeting with IFRS the other day, her audit, and they pretty much said, "You're gonna have to do it." We're still with our...
Oh.
So, anyway.
Boy, they're just after every...
Well, how many people are gonna want to do it now? Because, you know, their check, they're, you don't get paid, doesn't matter. Don't, don't even.
Can I go now?
Yes, we can go ahead and discuss this next item on the agenda.
Here's an item on agenda.
Yeah, it's, Tyler may not be here anyway, so, I'm sure he's in, but it's okay, he knows.
He doesn't need...
No. What are we doing now? Okay.
It's the item up here...
Approve the RFP for abstract services for FEMA buyouts. Larry's gonna explain a little something that we...
An RFP was sent out by SWIPCO here a while back, requesting for proposals from various abstract companies to do the abstracts. And they only received one response, and it was from SLN Enterprises Incorporated, does business as Mills County Abstract Company. They're a company that owns several abstract offices here around southwest Iowa. They kind of bought this one out over here and incorporated. And so, SWIPCO has reviewed this and advised it meets the spirit intent of the request for proposal, and being that the sole response was thinking we could just bring this and adopt, and approve it as it stands, the state recommended that since we only received one proposal abstract services, that we probably needed to do a, some documentation and a cost analysis, because it's a sole source. And so...
I know, I was gonna say, I know Alexis did reach out to the other entities that she had sent the information to and tried to get them to bid.
To get a second reach out.
Yeah, to get something, and...
Nobody.
So, but this company is a reputable company, and so, we reached out to the state and asked Iowa Homeland Security Division for today, what could be done, since it's on the agenda. And they endorsed that the board could approve this applicant, Mills County Abstract Company's proposal contingent on approval of the cost reasonableness analysis by Homeland Security. In other words, if SWIPCO is going to prepare and submit to us and Iowa Homeland Security and meets the spirit intent of the cost analysis survey, then you're basically accepting this proposal contingent upon that. So, that's what your motion and your vote would be today.
Well, we don't have a lot to choose from, do we?
And I think Carol contacted the assistant county attorney about it, and with the state being in concurrence with that, then you could, you could, you could pass, accept it today contingent upon finishing this cost analysis and submitting it to the state's liking.
Yeah, I mean, these are just all the hoops we, you know, have to draw, and when you're in this locale, you know, and you don't have a lot of options, this is what happens. And, you know, so, you know, then people get upset because they think we're holding things up, and we still are jumping hoops, too.
Yeah.
So, as Larry said, it needs to be approved contingent upon the cost analysis.
Alrighty. And I still approve, make a motion for the RFP for the abstract service, for the FEMA buyouts, because just get it going.
You say SNL Enterprises here in Mills County?
It was actually, it's the office, they, what will happen is, and he explains in a letter here, that they'll primarily work out of this office here in Glenwood, but they have two other offices, and they have two personnel here that would be doing a lot of the work, and they're familiar. A lot of the history of a lot of these properties is here, and there are records, anyway. So, it's gonna expedite the services provided, and whether they have to develop a new abstract from scratch, or whether they're just updating the abstract. And so, that's another positive, you might say, with going to them. The owner did say that if additional personnel was needed to meet the requirements of the contract, that they would bring personnel in from the other two offices that are qualified to assist in doing the necessary paperwork and research and development. So, that's stipulated on their proposal in here.
Right. And, you know, and the confusion has gone out, and we're really gonna have to put a timeline on our county page as to where we're at with things. But, I think confusion comes from, and I totally understand where they're coming from, and it's just a misunderstanding. The people that are in the buyouts are understanding this to be a two- to three-year contract when they read the RFPs. So, then they get concerned that it's gonna take two to three years more to get their, you know, to get their money in the buyout. But, what that actually identifies is the fact that the county and SWIPCO and the state all have that time period to get all our paperwork done, all our, you know, i's dotted, r-t's crossed. That's not gonna take that kind of time for the abstract and for them to go through closing. That's for us. But, it has to show that, and it's a misunderstanding, you know, it's, if you're reading, and that's when, you know, the people asked to see the RFPs, and then they went into panic mode because they're thinking two to three years. Well, it's not, and, you know, and there's not a good way to put that out to the people.
There'll be some of these properties that even Iowa Homeland Security has determined that will move along a lot more efficiently than others. And so, a lot of it's, again, dependent upon the abstracts and the availability of information. There's some paperwork that has to be signed off by the property owners, and then working through the offerings, you know, appraisals and the offerings, you know, offer, you know, what we're offering you for sale. So, I think there will be some opportunities here to see some expedited acquisitions. And then we get into the demo part, which, and of course, today, they did mention, gee, you've got two other request for proposals. One is for the title work, land survey and closing services, and the other one's for asbestos inspections that they're getting ready to release now to get that out there. And so, after this meeting, they'll call SWIPCO back up or email SWIPCO on these two here, and I think the state is seeing these also, I believe. So, this is all part of the due process of very timely keeping this project moving forward, not only, not only to, to, it's mainly, my goal would be is to provide relief to the people that lost the property. Basically, the people that were severely impacted during this flood, that they get closure. And that's the goal here, that they get closure. So, that's the reason why I, my for one, am asking our contractor to keep moving forward, timely reports, show us a milestone plan report, where we're at, things of that nature. And as the auditor said, she's monitoring it really closely also from her side to ensure along with county attorney's office.
But, once they start demo, they have ninety days.
Well, it's, the thing is, once we acquisition the property and we have approved an RFP for demo, which that's another RFP, the request proposal's probably gonna have to go out here pretty soon, once we close on the property and we've, and we've assigned a contract, awarded a contract, actually, it's when you close on the property that time starts. Now, that is a FEMA number. That doesn't mean you can't petition FEMA through the state as a state agent, agency to ask for an extension. It's not unheard of, that normally FEMA, that is the witness, that is the goal. I think it's doable, because I think, you know, if we have X amount of properties, you know, originally we had seventy on the list, will it be seventy at the end? I don't know. And if it was, I think it's gonna be in groups as we closing them. That process will start, and it'll have to be managed based on those groups, based on as they're awarded for demolition, and it's gonna have to be oversighted and making sure that it's being done timely. And there'll be other people involved, you know, county environmentalists, finding selling ops to be involved in it, you know, to kind of oversee that, because there's some things on remediation of septic and water, electrical, utilities, any of the other utilities have to be taken care of, you know, natural gas, propane. That all has to be cleaned out per standard, and that's part of the contract. Ensure that's coordinated with subcontractors and other companies to make sure it's done properly.
Wow. What a deal. Yeah, yeah, it is.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve SNL Enterprise as the abstract company.
Is it SNL Enterprises?
Oh, SLN, I'm sorry.
Enterprises Incorporated.
Oh, SL and N.
SLN Enterprises Incorporated, and they do business as Mills County Abstract Company.
And they are located here in Mills County. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
Their head office is out of Ottoman, by the way, their president's out of Ottoman. They own an office in Ottoman, and they have one, where was the other place? He has one other office.
We work very closely with this group over here, I mean...
He's gonna focus our support out of this one. Well, they have one in Montgomery County, too.
Oh, they do?
Yes. Ottawa, Montgomery County, and Mills County. Alex will know that, Terry, and from the state, and then depending upon her getting this necessary paperwork together, and the state and county attorney's office saying, yep, this is good, then it's executed, and they'll notify the contractor.
Okay.
You know, we're done?
Yeah, I don't know if you have anything else for general discussion.
Only thing I got is windows. You want me to bring that up while we're still live, or?
Say you're looking, or whatever.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the board's operation for today. We will be back. We will be back, we'll be back at 2:00 PM to canvass primary election results. You want to join us then, you're more than happy to. If you want to join us then, you're more than happy to.
June 2nd.
Yeah.
June 2nd, 2020.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is the County Board of Supervisors back in session for a short period of time here. We're in the process of discarding the primary election of June 2nd. We have President Carol Robertson and Lori Inglesby and Carol Vinton.
Okay. So what we have here for you is you'll need to sign off a section for us and one for the state of the abstract of votes. And it will be, the first section would be the United States Senator, Republicans, where Joni Ernst received 2,313 votes, 28 scatters, for a total of 2,0341. That was the Republican one. The Democrat, Michael Franken, received 80 votes. Kimberly Graham, 106. Teresa Greenfield, 444. Eddie Morrow, 64. Cal Woods, 15. Scattering three for a total of 712. Okay? The next, District 3, Republican. Bill Schaefer received 656 votes. And David Young received 1,710. And 12 were scattered. All right? Then the next would be the United States Representative, District 3 Democrats. Cindy Axony received 702 votes. Scattered 12. Total of 714. The next one up was State Senator, District 12, Republican. Mark Costello received 948 votes. And Richard Crouch received 1,518 votes. 10 votes were scattered. For a total of voting that race were 2,476. The Democrats' side, Joseph Norris received 637. And there were 19 votes scattered. Total of 656. State Representative, District 23, Republican. Charlotte Dunnett received 383 votes. And David Seig had 2,051 votes. Three were scattered. Total of 2,437. State Representative, District 23, Democrat. Scattering 56 votes. There was no one on that ballot for the Democrats' side. County Supervisor at Large, Republican. Lonnie Mayberry received 1,592 votes. Carol Vinton received 1,522 votes. Sandy Witten received 1,221. And there were two scattered votes. 4,337 votes were cast in the Supervisor, Republican race. On the County Supervisor at Large, Democrat. Scattering, received 78 votes. Carol Vinton received 59 as a, on the Democrat ticket. And Lonnie Mayberry, 49. Total of 186 votes. Republican side, Carol Robertson received 2,322 for County Auditor. There were nine scattered votes. And on the Democrats' side, there were 21 votes scattered. And Carol Robertson received 44 votes. So a total of 65. County Sheriff race, the Republicans. Eugene Goose received 1,213 votes. And Travis Otter received 1,332 votes. Two votes were scattered. And that was on the Republican ticket. And then on the Democratic ticket, there were 40 scattered votes. Travis Otter received 84 votes. And Eugene Goose received 57 votes on the Democrat ticket. And 181 votes were cast there. So that would be your election for the primary. So let's watch out.
You want me to do with that?
Sign it. Sign. You need to sign on the line.
It says Chairman.
You're not the chair, so you'll sign on the next line.
Carol will sign on the next.
You can sign on my other line if you want. On your group. Because I have, I have three sets of those. She's about done there. Okay? And then you'll sign the canvas summary.
It's just one page.
Oh, just this page. Okay. And that breaks everything down. First this, and then...
Those are the books they just need to sign.
Okay.
Ooh, nice. That's it?
Every page.
Yeah, but I mean, we don't have anything else to announce.
Nope. All you have to do is accept the results.
Well, folks, that's our, that's our primary coverage for the election. We thank you for tuning in if you did, and see you next week.